Good evening, welcome to the Planning Board Meeting for August 21st. We have a little bit of agenda is -- although important, we only have two items, but we do have a difference, if you will, tonight. Sitting to my left is Paul De Giuseppe, who is our new Planning and Economic Development Director. I'm sure I speak for all of us, welcome. Your presence is sorely needed, so.
I'll be taking minutes.
Why don't you take a couple of minutes? I know a little bit about your background, having seen your resume, but if you want to tell both the board members and people at home what your background is and what brought you here.
Great, well, thank you Chair, and I'm really honored to be here. Just a couple of minutes. I've most recently worked, actually worked with Julie, I worked for the state of Rhode Island in the Department of Administration in statewide planning program, but primarily my experience has been in local government, but I've worked in a large city. I worked for the city of Austin, Texas, for ten years, eleven years, till I moved up to Rhode Island, and prior I had worked in Florida with the Tallahassee Leon County Planning Department, which is a mid-sized city and county, and I'd also worked for the state of Florida for their statewide growth management. But again, I'm really excited because Rhode Island's my home, I grew up there, moved away for twenty-seven years, very happy to be back. My wife, who's from Houston, actually loves living in Providence, so that was a really good, you know.
We'll give her a winter or two, it's what happens.
She was like last we -- she just said, "Last winter, what's the big deal?" I'm like, "Well, we haven't really seen --" she knew it, but she actually likes cooler weather than hot, so she's okay with -- and she loves an August where it's seventy degrees.
Yeah.
You don't get that in Texas or Florida.
True.
Not even at nighttime, so. But again, I'm very happy to be here and looking forward to working with the board, working with the public. I'm very excited to be back working in local government, and beautiful town.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Should be again.
Peter, I am so happy you are here.
You've met the mayor of Norton, so the rest of us are just pretenders. Okay, and I'm going to apologize upfront for the handwritten agenda. This is what happens when technology fails and a pen doesn't let you.
Joe, it looks good.
I had to get it filed, and I had a half an hour, and I've been locked out of the computer upstairs because the password had been changed unbeknownst to me, and I had problems at home, so any event, problems at home.
Penmanship is negligible.
Yeah, totally legible, you did a very good job.
Thank you. We're posted, that's the key. I'm going to, if you don't mind Mark and Jeff, just flip a little bit, only because the other item on the agenda should be fairly, fairly brief, is our PEG Dooley here and her engineer?
I do thank you for taking us out of turn. Hopefully this will go fairly smoothly.
Could you just identify yourself?
Yes, my name is Dave Clennert, I'm from Collins Civil Engineering Group, and I'm here on the A&R plan for PEG Dooley, who is to my left. She is the owner of the property, and we're basically here to subdivide the property. The buildings were built in the eighteen hundreds, well before zoning regulations, and now they're going to, in order to create a sale for either one of these properties, we have to create property lines in between. It's an R sixty, the zone is R sixty, but nothing in here meets the zoning regulations only because it predates by so much. The offsets, the frontages, you do have frontage on Fernandez Circle, this is, by the way, is right on the corner of West Main Street and Mansfield Avenue. It's a very old historic building, both buildings are, and they're considered lots nine, or house number nine and thirteen, nine and thirteen. So the yellow is basically what we'd like to do. We'd like to create a lot line in between the houses and create an easement line right along the driveway for access to lot, to house thirteen. The reason why we want to do an easement right now is there's very old historic stone walls all along the property, we don't want to cut into those. If it's okay with the board, we'd just like to do access easement for this lot, and that's how it's working right now, regardless if there's an easement or not. Anybody coming into the property has to, would access right through the existing driveway as it stands. This driveway circles around and comes out on Mansfield Ave. This is in the water protection district, just to let you know, and that's pretty much it. I mean, they're not going to meet zoning by any means, not by area, not by frontage, not by offset, but like I said, these lots were built in the eighteen hundreds, and it just predates zoning and subdivision rules by so much that creating two lots would be impossible to meet the required zoning requirements.
Just by way of background, when I first heard that this was in the offing, I've never dealt with an A&R that ends up creating two non-conforming lots. So we checked with Town Council, there is a provision specifically, forty-one eighty-one S.
Eighty-one L.
L?
Eighty-one L.
Oh, S is U. That allows for the, anything that was pre-existing to zoning allows for the division of parcels. The only caveat I'd offer is you lose your non, pre-existing non-conforming status so that anything you want to do going forward in terms of a deck or a garage or something, you're going to have to go with, go to the zoning board of appeals. But beyond that, I think that's a little easier to live with than the situation you have here in trying to market the property, buyer has to buy both houses.
I guess this may be something that I may be overlooking, but in terms of the access to thirteen West Main, how does this differ from kind of the shared drive bylaws?
There won't be much difference at all, it's just we have to put an encumbrance on house number nine because that driveway will be in their lot, so the encumbrance is the access easement. It's going to work exactly how it is now, but people who, the purchaser of house number thirteen, will have the right in their deed by this plan to access their lot.
And again, this is my first experience with this type of arrangement. A common driveway still requires frontage and conformance with zoning.
Does, isn't it also a special permit process?
In terms of a common driveway, it does, but this isn't a common driveway because neither parcel has either frontage, adequate frontage to meet our zoning or area. What they're doing now is keeping what they have, you're not creating anything.
No new structures, no.
In terms of driveway reconfiguration or anything else, it's already existing, and because they have, or not they, but there's this exemption for properties that predate zoning, they're just.
So that exemption would also overrule maybe the incorrect term, but the shared drive special permit, that arrangement?
As far as I know, it does. Again, this was.
And you talked to Town Council about it, so I'll trust their interpretation.
Frank?
I have a question about the existing driveway that goes from West Main Street to Mansfield Ave. I'm trying to pitch it out, is that paved, is it dirt?
It's paved, and it's kind of hidden. If you go by there, you wouldn't necessarily see it. There's a, there's, the historic stone wall is pretty big.
Right.
And it's a pretty narrow driveway. You probably just drive by and think it's a walking path, but it's actually a driveway.
Interesting.
And some people use it as a walking pathway.
They do, alright. So could a tenant or a future buyer take a left-hand turn going out to Mansfield Ave, or actually coming home and taking a left into the premises from one, from one fourth?
Depending on the lights and the situation.
Yeah.
It gets pretty busy over there. This would be the more agreeable or easier driveway to access.
Right.
But yeah, you could, depending on the time of day and how the lights are working.
Interesting.
But it's an existing curb cut that already is in place.
It's, yes.
It's in place, I know.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, we don't want to touch anything, we don't want to, we just like to keep it exactly how it is.
And the easement is solely for the West Main Street driveway.
That is correct, yeah.
They have no rights to.
They have no rights to the other one.
They will have no.
But do we need to establish an easement, create an easement for that lot at this point, as opposed to leaving it open?
If you did, if you didn't establish an easement, there'd be no legal access because that access is on the other lot.
I understand, but we're signing off on that being an adequate subdivision, and I agree that that lot will need access to that driveway to be able to be serviced, forgetting about whether it's common or not, I guess we can, we're defaulting off of that because we have to, because of the age, but still, to create that, you're saying that will have to be done, is that something we typically require as part of this? That they have to establish that easement now to grant that lot? This building gets torn down tomorrow, the other question I have is typically with a, even with a A&R, we'd put on there, it's not a buildable lot. It certainly is not a buildable lot other than the existing unit. Do we have to make a notation that that's created is not a buildable lot? I don't know.
Well, there's.
Because it loses its existing non-conforming status.
Well, but the lot itself is a non-buildable lot, they can't build something else on that.
Right, if.
There is a note on here that says that by signing this plan, it does not mean that it complies with zoning in any way, profession, I don't know if that holds, but the Norton Planning Board.
Well, we got that language.
Endorsement makes no determination as to zoning on that parcel.
Town Council had suggested that if in fact there was an approval of this A&R, that we include the language, "Planning Board Endorsement Under the Subdivision Control Law should not be construed as either an endorsement or an approval of zoning requirements." Again, because this is new to me, if one of those houses were to be torn down, it couldn't be built upon without the zoning board of appeals granting some type of waiver. Chris, did you have any thoughts on, for those of you who don't know.
I have to admit, Paul, I was looking at that plan, I didn't catch the last minute or so, so. Your question was.
Well, the question was raised that if one of those houses were to be knocked down, you end up with a non-buildable lot unless zoning, ZBA grants some relief because it doesn't meet.
People would kick it back here for a special permit, but again, I think that would have to go to Town Council, so.
Yeah.
I defer that back to them.
Because Town Council did proffer that both these lots would be, would lose their pre-existing non-conforming status, and you'd end up with two, two lots that otherwise wouldn't meet current zoning, so in the scenario where one is knocked down, you'd have to get some type of variance from the ZBA.
Yeah.
Because it, and you're aware of that.
Yeah, and in my experience with, I haven't done a lot of these either myself, but I am kind of familiar with the eighty-one L law, and with my, from my experience, if anything should be built new or a new structure should go up there, it must conform to the current zoning bylaws. So yeah, anything built, like you had suggested, would have to go in front of a ZBA, or if something was torn down and built new, you'd have to conform to the current zoning bylaws, which would have to push us into ZBA as well.
And both buildings are currently on historical landmark?
Eighteen hundreds.
Eighteen hundreds, they have the plaque, they've been.
I don't know if they have a plaque or if they're, I'm sure that they're part of.
It's part of the Norton Historic District, so it's on the National Register of Historic Deeds, Historic Places.
Commission and society, or just society?
I'm sorry?
Historical society or historical commission?
It's part of the Historic District Commission, but it's also on the National Register.
Okay.
As part of the Historic District. But the house that is the oldest is seventeen-ten, and it's on the seal of the town of Norton, and it's the First Minister's House, it's the part, the original parsonage.
First House.
And speaking of perhaps being torn down in the future, which would be criminal because it's such an historic structure, which is in wonderful shape, the Historical Society is right across the street, and of course, they are loaded, I don't know if anybody's familiar with the interior, but they are loaded with beautiful furniture that has been given to them through the generations, and it would be actually wonderful if the town of Norton owned thirteen West Main Street, but of course, nobody has any money, et cetera. And Norton unfortunately only has a ninety-day waiting period for a do not demolish, and so it's conceivable it would be criminal if somebody came in. Other towns have at least a year, not at least, that's probably the maximum, other towns have a year.
I think a year.
And a year is a long time to discourage someone from tearing something down and to prevent it. But if you would all keep in mind that you don't know what the future will bring regarding that house, and it's certainly going to stand for another three hundred years, if not more. So anyway, that's just a little tidbit.
I think part of the discouragement would be that, I can't speak for the ZBA, but if I were a member and someone knocked that house with the expectation that we're going to get a variance, they'd have a hard time convincing me to grant a variance, but we're dealing.
And they'd have to call it prior to, without getting a do not demolish.
Town Council indicated we did not have to consider a common driveway. I know it's, that lot by itself is grandfathered, and that's, the driveways there servicing with that, is that all one lot right now?
Yeah.
As servicing the lot. They're now asking to create a common driveway. I don't know that, does that take it out because of its age and the subdivision? Are we asking for something beyond just the subdivision approval? Or they're asking for?
Well, it's not a subdivision. Ordinarily, it's referred to an A&R, Approval Not Required, which is always, it's somewhat of a misnomer because we still have to act on them, and I have never dealt with an A&R where both or however many lots, as long as it has, a parcel has frontage and meets all other zoning requirements, it's pretty straightforward. This, by everyone's admission and understanding, neither has on its own the required frontage or area. So again, in terms of a common driveway, I don't view it as a common driveway because a common driveway is for up to four buildable lots, and these are, this is one buildable lot, if you will. It's not two, and therefore doesn't qualify, as far as I can see, a common driveway. It just has pre-existing driveways in place that are going to be used in order to protect, you know, the buyer, someone's going to want an easement, so they aren't told, I can't, because the driveway is not, just standing corrected, the driveway is part of lot B, correct?
Until it crosses, it does cross over though.
Right, but in terms of the entrance.
Yeah.
So that's why the easements, but we're not creating a new common driveway.
No.
It's been in existence since at least eighteen-thirty when the second house would have been built.
Well, there weren't cars then, so.
Any other questions, comments, concerns?
The purpose of us being here, the property has been off, on and off the market for ten years, and there is simply no one out there of any age, unfortunately, who wishes for the two of them, the two antiques, for whatever reason. The niche is much smaller than your cul-de-sac, center entry, twenty-year-old colonial, and so therefore, I felt as though I had to pursue subdividing them in order to, maybe subdividing isn't the correct word, in order to create two parcels so that one and the other would sell.
Yeah.
Sooner than not, I hope, and it still may sell together, who knows?
I would think, I mean, I think the subdivision is one thing, throwing the approval of that common driveway is.
Again, it's, it's.
It's just, okay, I mean, we took that issue up separately, another time we addressed this, as one is a subdivision and second is the common driveway. The reason for that is as a common driveway, there's a requirement of documenting an easement. If it is to be determined to be a common driveway, then you have to provide it with just a common easement. Certainly you can subdivide it, you got the frontage. I think there's frontage on both lots anyway.
There is, it's not sufficient frontage for the zone.
So you have the frontage, you could subdivide it, the question is making sure that our plan, we're not approving that common driveway as part of that, I think, because we could ask for some qualifications, and basically, I think it's there, it's not an issue, it's just a matter of making sure part of a common driveway is making sure that that other lot has an actual easement, and I don't know that just, this referencing on the plan.
It would be written into the deed as well, so, I mean, there would be, a lawyer would refer to the plan and refer to the easement encumbrance in the, both the deeds.
Is this something that, as you mentioned, the property's been off the market for a decade, is this worth kind of following up with Town Council again to specifically note the question about the shared drive, just to ensure that we're following everything? If there's a better way to note that? Or is that something that's over and above what we need to do?
Again, the issue wasn't raised, I didn't speak to Town Council, Mike Unitz did. I did see the response, but I'm looking at common driveway, a private driveway providing particular access for at least two, but no more than four building lots. I'd submit that these aren't building lots, they are, again, in all other cases, the lots that are serviced by a common driveway all have to have frontage on their own, all have to have sufficient size. We all understand that's not the situation here. To me, an easement is a private matter between the parties. And whether we want to make reference to the easement, but I don't view it as a common driveway.
I mean, the driveway has been used in common ownership since the eighteen hundreds, so, I mean, its use is not going to change, it's the same use.
Well, I guess if they're not calling out a request for having that designated as a common driveway, they're just a subdivision, we just look at it as ignoring the fact that the driveway is there one way or the other, because they have the frontage, but historically, they're unable to use it, so we can just approve it on that basis without really getting into the easement itself.
Any other thoughts, concerns?
So the definition of common use, lot B would own the driveway, however, lot A would be able to use the driveway as theirs?
That is correct. Yep, and I don't mention common drive on the, on the plan either, it's just a access easement.
It's an easement, yeah.
Okay.
And twenty feet easement across the whole length of that easement?
Yes, that's correct.
Nice interesting way to start the meeting.
Well, yeah, I think this is new for all of us, but.
And the, I'm sorry, the size of the, both, how many bedrooms in each of the houses?
That would be something.
One or the other?
I'm just going to pitch how many cars could be out there, if there's two different ownerships, how many individuals would be living in both houses? Is it a two-bedroom, four-bedroom?
There are six in the larger house.
Six-bedroom?
Yes, one of them is an in-law apartment, that's included in the six.
Okay.
And the smaller house, the First Minister's House, is technically two bedrooms.
Okay.
But it's conceivably a third bedroom.
But, yeah, the bigger one has.
Maybe you'd like to see them.
Yeah, but the bigger one has the garage.
That's correct.
And the one has a very large driveway ending, so.
Right.
Yeah, for the parking.
The parking doesn't seem to be, it's not a concern to me anyway.
Plenty of room then, plus with the garage, okay.
Yeah.
There's plenty of parking behind the First Minister's House, for however many, there's probably five parking spaces, and of course, I use them at will because they're both accessible to me. But in fact, if there was a concern, there is a circular driveway in front of the house that I occupy, and that's plenty more parking.
Yeah, even if they're under separate ownership, and there were too many cars to go by the garage, they could go on the curved driveway that goes out to Mansfield Ave and just line up in a row.
Okay.
You mentioned the stone wall, does that extend down Fernandez Circle as well?
It does, a little bit, just partially, yeah, just partially.
Just partially.
And then it turns into some old cedars that are all lined up.
Okay. Are there any other questions? Is anyone prepared to make a motion?
I'm going to make a motion to endorse the, what do we call this? They propose division of these two lots as shown on the plan with the inclusion of Town Council's recommendation that Planning Board Endorsement Under the Subdivision Control Law should not be construed as either an endorsement or an approval of zoning requirements.
Second.
There's been a motion and second, we need discussion. Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, that's unanimous.
Right, thank you.
Thank you, and do we have the?
You have the Mylar rolled up? Yep, it's a part of the package, you guys still have the Mylar?
We need to sign that, Carol.
Could I have a copy of the Town Council?
Absolutely. Carol, can you be able to make a copy of this as well?
This is, I should be able to, because he's also helping. Because these are also my notes.
Thank you.
This, this isn't actual Town Council's total opinion, we'll get that to you. It's got some notes that Paul has.
Oh, okay. Is it a hard copy or an email, or should I drop by?
We have an email.
Yeah, we can also drop by if you want to sign the plan at the end of the night and not hold up proceedings, we can drop by tomorrow.
Yeah, we can, we'll sign it tonight, and it'll be here, and if you want to grab it tomorrow.
Yeah.
But it'll be signed for you tonight.
Okay, great.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Welcome to the new people.
Obviously, I wasn't particularly adept at predicting whether that was going to be brief or not, but apologies, let's, let's see how, how long we can hold you up, Mark.
I'll let you wait to do the plan?
That's their plan, so if you want to get started, and we'll just sign as time permits.
Good evening, Mark Tib with Condyne Engineering Group, and Jeff O'Neil with Condyne Capital Partners. Welcome back. We're here tonight to present the preliminary subdivision plan of the lots on the southern side of Leonard Street. It's part of what we've now named the Blue Star Business Park, and this is a portion of the properties that was rezoned last year to industrial, and I know we're here for the subdivision plan presentation, I just want to give a real quick update, and some of the new board members, and for Paul. Quickly go over and identify the parcels. So this map is the entire Blue Star Business Park that was rezoned industrial. The lots that on the subdivision plan are on the south side, this is Leonard Street, they're on these southern side lots, it exists of five lots, approximately eighty-nine acres, and. It exists of five lots, approximately 89 acres, and those are the lots that are currently on this proposal. The northerly lots will follow in a similar fashion, again, with a subdivision plan as we begin permitting those lots as well. And just to, because these are, so what we're talking about is buildings one, two, three, four, and five. There is also a lot six and a lot seven shown on the subdivision plan. And you'll notice lot six, through the MIPA process, we've removed that building from the proposal. It just didn't fit into what the environmental restrictions and what we needed to do for the park. And we've intense, slightly, very slightly intensified a couple of the buildings in the less critical areas and felt it was a good idea to, to concentrate the development in the less critical areas. So that's the review, just quickly, of where we are for the park. And in front of you today is the subdivision plan, so we're proposing to, this is, this is sheet three right in the set with the blue highlights. So we're proposing to divide the parcels into seven parcels. One through five will be, are proposed to have a single building on each lot, meet all zoning requirements, setbacks, lot cover, you know, area, lot coverage setbacks, all the zoning requirements. Lot six will have some upland area and could potentially be buildable, but we have, right now, we have no intention. We're actually using a portion of it for compensatory storage, which is getting into a lot of detail for the project that we can go there, get there if we want to. And then lot seven is, will be a non-buildable lot. We've proposed to take whatever action, whether land banking to Norton or, you know, reserving as conservation area. We're proposing to take some, some kind of action such as that for this, this built, this lot, which is primarily wetland area. The, couple things, I mean, we're here for the preliminary subdivision to define the lots, and what, by defining those lots is, paves the way for, are able to submit applications for special permit and site plan review. The intention beyond, once we have these lots, a favorable agreement on these lots is that each one will, we will submit an application for special permit, because every, every building's over 10,000 square feet, commercial building over 10,000 square feet, and for site plan review for each lot, as well as conservation has reviewed. We've talked to them and they, we will be submitting a notice of intent for each lot as well. So it paves the way to begin that process. The site plans themselves will be one large set of site plans. Drainage, certain aspects, some of the driveways are shared, drainage, you know, intermingles and is shared a little bit. The water lines can loop throughout the property, we've met with the water department and fire department. So there will be separate filings, but one set of plans and with all the details needed. Everything you'll see in a, in a, in a site plan set will be forthcoming landscape plans, lighting plans, all the, the grading and drainage utilities, all the requirements for site plans. So, I mean, we're starting with this preliminary subdivision phase, and if you have any questions at this point, there are pretty, for a preliminary subdivision plan, the, the set that was submitted is relatively detailed. It has quite a bit of, the drainage is essentially designed, you know, it's not conceptual drainage as your bylaws require at the preliminary stage. It is a detailed set of site plans. And the only thing I didn't cover in Leonard Street, we're proposing to widen Leonard Street and up to the right-of-way will be 50 feet wide, and the widening, the land-taking, I guess I'd say, is coming out of the parcels on the south side. We're not proposing to take anybody, you know, to go out and take land off a parcel we don't currently have as part of the, the park. So widening from Leonard Street will be, land area will be taken from these lots. If you have any questions right now?
Just real quick, this large set, is this the same as the small set we have?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, it'll look like it, so I just wanted to be sure. I have a quick question, just in terms of the initial thoughts on access into each of these first five buildings, is there one common entrance air drive off of Leonard Street or more than one?
Yep, so there'll be, there is an access here, a right-only access.
Okay.
Off of 123 going north.
North, yeah.
Then Leonard Street, there's a ma, this is, this will be a major access here, as well as then there's another access further down.
Okay, so it'll be one between four and five?
Right.
Okay. An initial thought, just stop sign access out of there, right?
Yes.
Okay.
I've got a couple of questions for you. First, your Form B isn't signed by any owners. Do we have a representation of ownership, you guys?
We do, we did gather all the owners, the one that came in the pack that didn't have signatures. I can send Paul a copy of the fully executed.
Am I correct, it's my understanding this is in a zone two water, the whole, the whole parcel is in a zone two water resource protection district, is that correct?
Correct.
It's my understanding, I think under the bylaws, in an industrial zone that's in the water resource protection district, the minimum lots have to be 80,000 square feet? And I've just seen these, the first two are only 40,000 square feet. I'm looking at section 6.7 of the bylaws. The other question I had was, you referenced the front buildings as commercial buildings, it was my understanding all along these are supposed to be retail, is that just a, using it?
Yeah, and they're, the intention is retail.
Did we retail?
No.
Forgive me, because I couldn't, I didn't have a full set and I was trying to desperately look through the small set and it's brutal. But following up on Steve's question, the interest that goes to the, the secondary entrance to the retail section is a right turn only? So people coming down north, 123 heading south would come down, have to turn into Leonard Street to get to the retail section. Coming in there, how do they get to that third building?
There is also a straight driveway through here, so they can, they can either come in and go along the front of the buildings, or come in and turn this way through.
But they can't go straight, because I think there's a.
There's no access right here. It's, it's designed that once you get past this point, it's more of a loading, detached areas, the loading for this building, detached areas, the loading for this building, as well as the loading docks for.
So you.
Parking would be on, if the, the lower side of buildings two and three?
Correct, parking's around the front side.
Drive in between one and two and then come around to that side of two and three. Sorry.
Yeah, I, I'm just.
I think then you see this one, it might be clear.
See, backed up the loading for two, three, and four into like.
You can't use.
Near that.
Yeah, but you can't use the loading, you gotta come down, go, take a right.
Yeah, if you were to, if you're going to visit three or two, you gotta go, you gotta wrap around in front, keeping the, they're trying, like, I'm assuming they're trying to keep back of the house here and back of the house on four.
Yeah, but.
In one area.
You only get access coming in this way?
Yeah.
So now you have company, access running this way to turn left.
Right, yep, come in and then over, yeah.
Yeah, that's not the greatest.
And there's going to be a raised median, you understand, highway.
Okay.
Off the edge.
You have something designation and something I've never seen, a buyer retention area next to the warehouse facilities? Is that something that's come up and I've never seen that term used? Is that anticipating some kind of use?
That's just a low-impact design. It allows further, you know, removal of sediment and, you know, it's a, it's a green type of stormwater management.
You also have, I, I see in the Leonard Street expansion, you have a note, I'm trying, was trying to read it, about filling in loam. Your, is taking a right-hand turn out of Leonard Street, is that just a single lane or is it a double lane?
Leonard Street, right or left is going to be a single lane.
Is there any cha, I mean, because you, it looks like you're actually paving and you're loaming and.
Yeah, we're actually removing some pavement.
No, it says you're loaming and seating it to the right, which looked like it would be a.
I think the sheet you're looking at is probably this one.
Yeah, with the Leonard Street existing, it actually almost cuts the property corner off a little bit.
Mm-hmm.
This is Leonard Street here, and the existing pavement comes in here across. So we're realigning it a little bit, so all this existing pavement is being removed and just, you know.
I was just curious as to why you wouldn't want a right-hand turn getting at, there's a light coming out for traffic?
We can take a look at that.
Because you've got a right-hand turn coming in, but going out, I just don't know where you'd take this one.
One thought about that, though, they're, they're also adding sidewalks along Leonard and I believe, well, along Leonard for certain. I think one thing to consider, though, a right-turn lane can create some conflicts with pedestrians, potentially, until we've seen the design of it, but a right-only might be something we want to think about in terms of, you know, promoting safety with pedestrians that they're, that they're, are they're building the sidewalks, so we just want to make sure that we're not.
The sidewalks are, I believe, are going to be on the south side, you're not planning sidewalks on the north side?
South side.
Of Leonard, just on the south side?
Oh, just south side, okay. Just south side, okay.
And there's going to be a light there.
There is a traffic.
There'll be a traffic light there.
Yeah.
When you, when you come in for the north side, are you building a sidewalk on the north side of Leonard as well?
Down in this area of the project, this is a separate parcel, so we're not modifying anything.
Okay.
Until all the way.
Until back there, okay.
Now, there are a couple of these, and I was just trying to find some of these lines, but some of them clearly have buildings across the 100-foot buffer, some are in the AE zone. I'm assuming that you'll be taking those up with conservation?
Correct, yes, every, even the corner lot, I believe, that doesn't have, affected by buffers, eventually portions of it are draining into buffers, so we're anticipating every lot to file a notice of intent for every single lot.
Have you, have you, okay. Water and sewer, you're just showing what's going to be on the property, did you have any, you're showing where it's going? Water and sewer?
These plans, you know, again, are sub, preliminary subdivision plans. Their water, water is, exists in Leonard Street, you know, and comes in to serve the buildings, and sewer is being pumped south across the highway.
Are those existing lines, you're tying into existing lines or you're creating new lines?
They will be a new line all the way down to the hump in.
Cover, that's going to the wastewater treatment side.
Yeah, so the entire park will be on town sewer.
Those lines are part of your project, offsite project?
Correct.
What a project? Timing, in terms of how that time corresponds to the work the state's doing on that, those intersection?
We have to get in before the state does the work. We understand the state is doing their work in two separate contracts in two separate phases. We don't know whether the ramps and the lights are going first or whether further down 123 is going first. But the work that we're doing has to go in prior. So they're looking at a spring start sometime in 2019, we're going to get in prior to that time period.
Okay. Has the MIPA filed, been filed, the MIPA?
Been filed and approved.
It's been approved?
Yes.
Okay.
Certificate's been issued.
Frank?
Could you give an example, you mentioned buildings one and two, I think you said they're both 10,000, over 10,000 square feet, and then number five is over 250,000 square feet. Could you give an example of an existing building, whether it's something in Norton or Mansfield, for example, what that structure would look like?
The 250?
Like for one and two, if something that's 10,000 square feet, is that like an average restaurant or an average?
Mansfield Crossing is, I think is how I'd heard described it before.
Yeah, we had, we, we do have renderings of what the project would look like.
Okay.
I don't think I have the retail, but I have building five in there.
We do have the industrial buildings.
Okay.
250 is pretty much a standard warehouse size in this area.
Okay.
So here's a sample of what the industrial will look like. This is the large one, which is the 250,000 square feet.
Okay.
And this is a sample of the 125,000 square foot building, which is the first one in on the right, the large one.
All right.
Similar product, there's tilt-up concrete with a lot of glass, a lot of architectural insulated metal panel as well, separating the features of each of the buildings.
And for one, two, and three, are those just very simple?
They're actually a lot more complicated in design, so we're using a tilt-up concrete product that's going down to really accent it, so.
Single story on each of those?
Single story on the retail, yes.
Yeah.
The commercial retail.
Has it been determined on how many, you know, spaces those buildings will?
No, not at this point in time.
Yeah?
They'll be designed to be subdivided momentarily.
Because 10,000 square feet, that could be three to five units in a way.
Could be, yes.
It could, okay.
With storefront entries at the entrance.
Right.
What's the height of those buildings?
The warehouse buildings, the warehouse buildings will be 32-foot clear, which probably puts it just around 40, 42 feet. The retail will be shorter than that.
In terms of, you walked through the varying permits and no filings, you're looking to do on all of these parcels, I guess. In the DEIR, you had said that you hoped to be kind of beginning construction in September, obviously it's August.
This week.
Yeah. I guess, how has, what is the current timeline?
The current timeline is with conservation, we plan to be on their first meeting in September. We all know that can take one meeting, two meetings, six meetings, seven, you know, so that's the timeline for conservation. Similar for planning, we have a little bit more lead time, you know, the deadline's a little bit ahead, but, you know, if it's not the first meeting, because I'm not sure if we can make the first meeting in September, it'd be the second meeting in September. And basically, and as Jeff said, we have our FEIR MIPA certificate, so those are really the two main approvals we need, as well as the selectmen have to review the roadway widening, and that as well may need a notice of intent, which would fall either in line with all the other filings or at the next hearing. And the, the sewer improvements that, we have some work to do with that design as well. And the sewer improvements that, we have some work to do with that design, as well as the mass DOT permits that we need. There's existing chases in the bridges, you know, we don't have to, we're not going under the river, you know, we're going in existing infrastructure in the bridge. So, but that, again, needs to be in before the other improvements. So that, you know, anywhere from October to April, you know, when those other improvements are coming in, is when the sewer work will happen.
Okay, so it's a little bit up in the air at this point.
Well, overall, our intent of the whole park, what we could term as phase one, is what we're here tonight in one of the other lots. Phase two is everything that's up behind in the back of the property. Phase one, we're going to proceeding with one of the retail buildings, the two warehouses, and the third warehouse building. Phase two will be done after a certain amount of leasing is done on that first phase of development. So we may not see phase two probably for a year and a half now.
And phase two maybe is...
Phase two is the back parcel.
Okay, all right.
All the way to the site.
You mentioned...
So the three reds and then the orange up front is phase one, and then four yellows and the orange in the back is phase two.
You mentioned a leasing percentage. Now, you're, you've already at least started some of the marketing on the park.
We have.
Is there, are there tenants lined up at all?
There is strong tenant interest, yes. We're not at liberty to say because it's not public information, yes. We predict that two of them will be done before we get a shovel on the ground.
Could you direct, I was trying to look at the small plan. Is there, one of these plans indicating the frontage of these, the dimensions of these lots?
Um...
And I should look at it.
Lot two, the overall dimension is shown. It means we need to, certainly we need to have a breakdown of that dimension, but that is 150 feet from here to here, and then there's 150 feet from this point to the corner of the development.
The entrance in from 123, that falls all under the lot one section, is that right?
The right turn.
Right turn only into, into the...
Yes, because this is the, this is lot one.
Yeah, that's your property line here, right.
Along with this is all sorts of shared access agreements, things like that will be worked out.
Let me just kind of toss in, in terms of process, you mentioned some of the other permits, but this is the preliminary, preliminary subdivision, or definitive subdivision. One of the things we typically do, and this is for the benefit of some of the new members, and you're aware of it, we typically send this, certainly a project of this size, out peer review, which has not been done yet. We, there has been, have been attempts in the past to have peer review done contemporaneously with COMCOM, but there's been some resistance. So they may send their own peer reviewer out. But that's something we'll have to do, is have one of our engineers, engineering firms review this at the preliminary stage, ultimately at the definitive stage. So that's, you know, that's in the offing as well. Just a quick question that I had in terms of, I don't want to assume anything, but I'll just say it, the assumption is that there won't be occupancy until that light is in place, or is...
I think that would have to depend on the seasonality when it's going in. We'd have to figure that out. Come back on that. And it has to match up when they're, because it has to match up to their lights when Mass Highway's doing theirs.
And you're, you're assuming like a complete street scape for Leonard Street, right? Sidewalks, shoulder-wide enough for bike, kind of elements?
Leonard Street will have a sidewalk all the way down to the second entrance. Beyond that, it's constrained by wetlands on both sides. We have provided an interior walking path amenity for the project. You can see it actually comes through here in the end, just through the property, because the sidewalk ends here, there's just isn't enough physical room to widen Leonard Street from this point, basically to the end of the project.
Okay.
More than to make it adequate for the truck access. So we have been able to provide a pathway to get over to this point, that's just as an amenity. But full walking access from, from one end to the other was not, is not really feasible for the project.
Yes. Is there, no other questions from members?
Raise the ball, how you over, hold a little bit please, except for the...
I'm sorry.
I don't think I have any more questions for...
And just to clarify, you mentioned the sidewalk on the south side of Leonard Street. Any designated bike path lane?
Bike path, not on Leonard Street.
We're just, you know, on the, so nothing in the plans yet, okay.
Was, there a list of the butters that had to be provided with the preliminary plan? Was that...
No, it was not required technically.
There's no notice requirement, but I believe there is a list requirement.
There is a list requirement.
Yeah, there is a list requirement.
Right, but there's no notice.
Correct.
Okay.
There will be at the definitives, in the special permit.
So we can, I can proceed and file special permits, site plan, you know, lot one?
Well, we still have to go through the definitive. I mean, we've got to break out the lots.
Can they happen? I mean, what if based on site plan review, you know, something tweaks, you know, then can we take a parallel path with those two things?
I don't see why not.
I have a problem with that. I mean, this project is big enough that I think we need to understand it. I think from my perspective, I'd like to see a definitive site plan. And then from there, look at each one of these properties individually.
I don't see them as mutually, clearly, there has to be definitive subdivision plan filed. There has to be site plan review, there has to be special permits for each building. I don't see that they can't happen at the same time. Obviously, they have to be reviewed, but I don't, I don't see the benefit of sequencing them.
I think the benefit of time, that's all. As long as we're willing to get extensions necessary that we need, I just don't want to give up on the timing, because I think the project...
At the end of the day, people have to be satisfied that their questions have been answered. But again, and I think there's some merit, because there may be changes by way of a site, a site plan or a special permit for a building. You know, you raised an interesting point, and I can't read our zoning map, we'll get that. But the 80,000-square-foot lot size for a Zone 2, I can't tell if it's in Zone 2 or not, based on our...
It's in industrial, it's industrials, or other Zone 2. I think their reports indicated the whole property is Zone 2.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll look into that.
My point is that, you know, those are the types of things that, again, we don't have to wait one thing satisfied then to the next, that those types of things can come up in the site plan review.
Yeah, and I think through the process, when you do site plan review, all your stat, you know, your other department heads, you know, if, if it creates a lot line moving somewhere, you know, we'd like to get that input from staff, the public, the planning board, and then it can all come together. And obviously, yeah, no billing, nothing, billing permit could ever be issued until the definitive subdivision plan is done and all the special permits are done. So we'd like to...
That creates, I don't think, I don't think we can approve the preliminary plan if, in fact, those lots are required to be 80,000 square feet. We can't approve a plan that only has 40,000 square feet as a preliminary plan, because we're stuck with that preliminary plan going forward, if there's a reason for a modification.
Well, I, again, I, I don't know what people's intentions were tonight, including the applicants, but without review of peer engine, peer review from an outside engineer, I didn't anticipate any approval tonight of a, of a preliminary. This was, I think, the kind of camel's nose under the tent type of thing. Again, this is, you saw we struggled with breaking up one lot, breaking up 100 and whatever acres into lots, I think, for me anyways, requires some guidance. Again, we want to make this happen, speaking for myself, but we want to make it happen right. So, you know, I...
Would we, I mean, I don't, getting approval and getting these lines nailed in stone, I don't believe that was particularly intentioned. It's paving the pathway to be able to submit some more applications based on these lots. And, you know, if everything, if a lot line, you know, disappears because we've got to combine two of the 40,000, or even, you know, potentially just make the first lot into one, or the first three lots into one, you know, that's, we have no, you know, that's not too much of a big deal. We just want to be able to submit, say, a special permit application and work through all these things, start getting feedback, comments from the different departments based on some detailed design. So if we can, you know, continue working through this, as well as just submit applications, you know, and not look into, obviously, this, these subdivision lines have to be approved and, you know, continue to work through the, all the filings. But to get that, you know, a consultant reviewing this preliminary subdivision plan could also use the benefit of the actual special permit filing that has the landscaping, the lighting, the, you know, so we'd like to get that in as well, to really be able to identify all the types of...
Again, without, without looking at timelines, I think the clock is pretty much controlled by us up until we close the hearing. And then, then the clock really starts to toll. We have a very defined period of time to act within closing of the hearing. But my, my point is, you know, whether, whether the information comes, clearly, there's a lot more information that needs to come, but whether that information comes as part of definitive subdivision, whether it comes as a result of filed site plan, individual special permits, again, it's all, it's all plus information. I don't think anyone's prepared to act on anything until they're satisfied that their questions have been answered. You know, probably the biggest thing is butters have not been notified. Again, that's part of the process. You, you don't have to notify in terms of a preliminary. But, you know, we're, we're just at the gate at this point. It's not to say with more information, as, as part of the process unfolds, we, you know, we can't make this, move this thing along if, if it's merited. Clearly, town meeting spoke, it wanted this zoned industrial for a reason, but there are precautions that need to be met. So I just wanted to put out there in terms of process, that we're at the, by definition, the preliminary stage, we're going to have, have outside review, and, you know, let's make that happen. Are there, are there any other questions for tonight? We have not set, to my memory, additional meetings. So there's, I assume the expectation is that we would continue this to our, our next meeting, whenever that is. And if in the meantime, there's other things you want to start filing, we can't stop you, nor would we want to. But again, I think people are going to take the time they feel necessary to make sure that they can make an informed and proper decision.
So process to get the peer review going, are you going to bid right away with the third-party engineers? We...
We have a list of...
We want to get that moving.
Right, we have a list of three to be candid, until we had a staff person.
Right.
I, it was difficult enough getting just some more mundane things done. So we'll, we'll send that out for pricing ASAP. I'll speak with Paul and talk about the process, but...
And if we could do that in, in layers, it says, look, here's the subdivision, there's the review, but also try to use the same group for the next, and the next, and the next.
Yeah, it makes sense.
We don't want to introduce different players at each stage of the...
Unless there's, there's a particular aspect, and I'm just making this up, if there's a traffic concern and the firm that we use is not real comfortable with traffic, we'll parse that out. But the expectation is, given the size of this, we'll send it to a larger engineering firm.
Just to look at future schedules, two weeks, we have a primary election on the fourth, and then it's Patriots' Day on the September 11th. So the earliest we could probably meet again, if not next week, would be three weeks from today. Is that okay for people's deadlines and timelines and everything?
I didn't hear Frank, I'm sorry.
I'm just looking at weeks to come. We usually meet every two to three weeks. Two weeks, there's an election, so September 4th would be out of the question. The next day, we'd probably meet as a committee, would be September the 11th, Patriots' Day, three weeks from today. Would that be okay to reach people's deadlines and expectations of the timeline?
Patriots' Day and Rhode Island?
Uh, it's a national holiday, September 11th is a national holiday.
Is this?
September 11th.
I'm not sure it's, I'm not sure it's called Patriot's Day, because Patriot's...
Patriot's Day is...
Patriot's Day is Massachusetts, different, but...
It could have a Rhode Island calendar. No, it says Patriots' Day, and then you got Yom Kippur. So I'm just saying, I don't want to say it's going to be a month and a half, the next time we meet, but looking at days and availability.
You're basically thinking does September 11th work?
I'm just letting people know, it was, for what information we're trying to gather, could we meet within a week as opposed to three weeks from today? Because I don't think, can we actually meet on September 4th, which is an election day?
No, cannot meet on an election day.
Not on the election day.
So unless we meet a week from today, which is usually Tuesday, we won't assemble again until 21 days from today, I think.
I don't think, I don't think a week is feasible to turn around peer review, so...
Yeah, although...
I mean, I, I think it'd be in our interest to start, in a peer reviewer's interest, to start the special permit procedure as well. And that takes almost 21 days to, between the ads and the notifications. And so even, I mean, I don't want to push things out, but, you know, whatever your normal meeting, because we wouldn't be able to norm, is it first and third Tuesdays normally? Or, you know, so whatever the third...
The election is...
Whatever the third Tuesday in September is, is, is a date that we can, as well as continue this procedure, potentially start the site plan and, and get that. And I think it's everybody's interest to get notifications out and, you know, get the process rolling and get, so even, even if it's that, whatever the, your third Monday is in September.
Tuesday.
Tuesday.
Probably a Monday.
The, the 18th is Yom, Yom Kippur. I don't know if that's an issue.
It's an issue.
Okay.
The 18th, no.
Sorry? According to the calendar.
It's, yeah.
The 11th and the 25th, is that...
The 11th, to my knowledge, is not a holiday. I mean, certainly...
Well, now it's said it's Patriot Day, not Patriots' Day, so it's Patriot Day.
Oh, okay.
So maybe it's not a state or a federal, so...
I think it's, I think it's a holiday that is...
Recognized but not...
Recognized but not observed in a way, yeah.
So the 11th is open if that's...
So do we, because the 18th is a problem, and 4th is prohibited.
So...
The 11th work?
Okay.
Again, all right, we'll continue this to the 11th, and we'll notify you about time.
Would you still have one in the two weeks after that, do you think?
Um...
Probably do that at the end of the meeting.
I don't want to presume anything. I've not done too well so far. We typically have two.
That would be the expected, you know, scenario.
25th.
Be the 11th and the 25th, you know, we'll, we'll have to finalize that, but...
Well, do we want to set those two meeting dates, the 11th and the 25th, so that...
I'm open.
That's fine.
Is that good for everyone? All right, so at least we have the 11th and the 25th set. All right, so at least we have the 11th and the 25th set.
Good.
All right, thank you very much, and we'll see you on the 11th.
Thank you.
Mark, you can take these too, I don't want to steal the sun. Yeah.
Let me do a huge apology, another bit of information I didn't share with you, I did not introduce Carol Castano, who has been with us for, what, a month now? Yeah, I apologize, Carol. Carol is our, our, was our one and only staff.
Staff of one.
Fortunately, there are no tall bridges in Norton, so she didn't jump off of anything during the, during that month's period, but welcome, Carol, and thank you for your help over the course of the last few weeks, but I apologize for, I think you were off running for one of these things, I forgot to mention you or introduce you. That, other than setting meeting dates, I think concludes what we have. Do we have any bills that have been prepared?
We have bills, they haven't been prepared, like according to the regular process for the health numbers, but there's nothing that's overdue or upcoming.
Okay, okay, we'll, we'll try to get that addressed for the 11th.
Justin, I do have, I have one update about the Village Center group.
Oh, great, thank you.
Just to share with the group, the Village Center stakeholder group, which includes a number of different people, Mike Units is involved, Bob Kimball's involved, along with Horace Lee Witten and McMahon engineers, looking at the town center, so essentially intersection of 123 and 140 in the surrounding area. We have a second public meeting scheduled, preliminarily scheduled for Thursday, September 27th, and that will be at Wheaton College. If anyone's interested in more information, there is a website about it, and happy to give out information, and I know I need to talk to you about it, but-
Is there a time?
Uh, the time of the public meeting, let me open up my calendar, is set at 6 o'clock at Wheaton College.
Where in Wheaton College?
Uh, I do not have the building yet.
Oh.
Sorry.
When is it out, 20?
The 27th of September. But, yeah. That is, so we have some time before that, but since it was set today, or at least I got the calendar invite today, now I-
Makes it official?
Yes.
Any other items to be brought up? Let me just do a request, we're still looking for someone to do minutes, which is, it's, it's not an easy task, it's, you know good minutes when you see them, and you know bad minutes when you see them, so if anyone is interested in taking minutes for the planning board, and there may be other boards that need minutes taken, but I suggest you contact Mike Units, because we have no one at the moment, and we're going to have, and we've got quite a backlog of minutes that I don't even know have been drafted, let alone ready for approval. So.
Yeah, I think it goes back to April-ish.
April, yes.
The last, like, formal minutes that we've approved. We didn't have a whole lot of meetings in between, you know, the past few months either, to that end, but, but, yeah.
On the subject of meetings, we did get the 11th and 25th, are folks comfortable in finishing out the year, to be candid?
Yeah.
The 9th and 23rd of October.
I'm sorry.
The 8th is Columbus Day, I don't know if that affects anyone's schedule, but-
Schedule for the following day.
I'm sorry?
The schedule for the following day, you mean?
Right, well, Monday is Columbus Day, I, again, I didn't know if anyone has any plans, but the 9th and the 23rd for October, does that work?
I may be out of town on the 9th, that's not set in stone yet, but it's a potential.
Well, let's, let's put it down.
23rd is okay.
Would the 2nd and the 16th be better, or?
That would only leave one week in between the 25th and the 2nd.
Yeah.
Whether or not that's advantageous or not is, given what we have in front of us, that might not be a bad idea.
We're not going to be, if you push to November, the 6th is Election Day, so-
I'm sorry?
If you look at November, for example-
We'd create a big gap.
Long gap, so if we don't do the 23rd, the 16th, all the way to the 13th of November.
All right, so we'll always stick to the 9th and the 23rd, and if something happens with UST, we can always, we could go the 16th instead of the 9th.
Perfect.
And-
I'm sorry, you said the 9th and the 23rd, did you switch that?
The 9th and the 23rd.
Yeah.
And, uh, the 6th, we can't meet, that's an election, or the election.
13 and 27, we can avoid the 20th, like the plague, is that?
Yeah, that's probably a good idea to get, around the Thanksgiving holiday week.
Yep, 11/13 and 11/27.
September 11th, 12th, 13th, 27th.
And the 4th and the 18th, I know, I realize that's only one week, but obviously, we're not going to meet on Christmas.
What were the November dates, I'm sorry?
The 13th and the 27th.
13th and 27th.
Yeah, I think.
4th and the 11th, uh, 4th and the 18th.
4th and 18th.
Does that work for folks?
That appears to. And I think that makes sense in terms of closing out the calendar year.
Right. Your last minute, if needed.
Yeah.
Again, we don't carve these in stone, if, if something comes up, we're-
Well, I think as a tentative, yeah, I mean-
Okay, at least gives us something to shoot for.
December 4th, what was the second date, 18th?
18th, not Christmas.
Okay.
All right, for anyone interested in doing the minutes, who do they see? Who do they reach out to?
It would be Mike, Mike Units.
Mike, okay.
He's hiring, hiring authority.
Yeah, okay.
Is there a requirement that the person be a town employee?
No.
Okay.
No.
Another, or-
The fact that it, it would, again, I can't speak for Mike, but it would probably be easier from a contract standpoint, that they not be a town employee.
No, I mean, do they have to become a town employee?
Oh, no, no.
Because I know there are a number of online services that will transcribe your videos for you, and they just charge by the minute of the video.
That's, that's interesting, because we do have good video.
Exactly. Here are these files, type them, please.
If you could get me that information, uh-
I will do that.
Good suggestion.
Even if it's just to, to bring, catch us up.
Just to catch us up, yeah.
Yeah.
Any other business for tonight? Hearing none, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you very much, good night.